Thank you. Let's see, we are honored today to have our Laramo County District Attorney Gordon McLaughlin is here to give us a 2022 annual report to us. So, thank you, Gordon. Thank you for being here. So, there's a microphone there. We're going to want to pull it up and turn it on.
Yeah, you have to get close.
How about this? Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for having me today. So, this is the first time that we're doing this. We're calling this our annual report, and I appreciate you having me for it tonight. I came into this office committed to greater transparency and accountability, and so one of the things I want to do is reach out to our town councils and our town boards to, A, go to them, not make everyone come to us at the DA's office, B, to let you all know what we're up to and what we're doing at the DA's office, and then, C, take any feedback or questions from you all, because your input is really important to us at the DA's office. You all are obviously in touch with the Loveland citizens on a daily basis, obviously more than we can do at the DA's office. So, your input and your feedback is really important to us and what kind of job we're doing, and we're hoping to share some of that with you here today. And I'm probably going to rifle through this because I respect your time of watch many city council meetings go to 11:00 p.m., and I'm committed not to be responsible for that, so I'm hopefully going to go fast. So, first, just for the Council probably knows most of this, but I know there's a lot of folks always tuning into these, and of course, folks in the audience here. So, we're technically the Eighth Judicial District Attorney's Office, which is Laramo and Jackson Counties, and we prosecute the majority of crimes, the vast, vast majority of crimes that occur in Laramo County, meaning also the vast majority of crimes that occur in Loveland. Obviously, you all have a terrific city attorney and terrific city judge here in Loveland, but that's obviously a very, very small subset of the crimes. You hear those reports, of course, all the time, so we wanted to give you a report on some of the bigger issues that we are obviously also handling. Loveland is about 21% of our Eighth Judicial District population, so that's a pretty big chunk of our folks that you all have here in Loveland, and so this is a pretty important part of our district. We obviously report to all you and every citizen in Loveland County, as we're an elected office for the whole Eighth Judicial District, and we want to ensure that we're doing that, and as I said, that's why we're here today. A little bit about our presence here in Loveland, as the Council knows, but for everyone else, we're over at the Loveland Police and Courts Building. We have a fully staffed office there. We have three attorneys, staff in two divisions. We also have an investigator there, a victim advocate, and some legal staff. That presence on the southern end of the county is really important to us. It is tough for victims to get places. It is tough for defendants to get places. It's tough for witnesses and jurors to get places, so the fact that we can serve people down here in this end is important to us, and we know how stressful and traumatic it can be for, you know, a victim that might be working multiple jobs and single parenting to have to come in and try to meet with us, and so we're trying to make those opportunities available. We also provide all sorts of services to all of our local police departments, including Loveland Police Department, things like screening warrants, screening cases. Starting last year, our office now screens every warrant, every search warrant from every agency before it goes to a judge. So, that's going to help preserve defendants' rights. It's going to help build stronger cases, and that's going to help our credibility in front of the courts. We have on-call deputy district attorneys 24/7. We have several different rotations of folks. Some of those are just answering general questions like, hey, what do you think of this odd situation that we might get from a patrol officer on the Loveland Police at 2:00 in the morning? Others are screening warrants. Others are ready to respond to homicides. Others, like myself, for instance, are ready to respond to officer-involved shootings, but that's a service we have 24/7. And then, we, of course, do law enforcement trainings with things like case law updates and legislative updates, which are fast and furious. We're trying to keep up with those in our office, and we know that is tough for an officer on the street to make sure they're keeping up with those, so we try to provide that service to the greatest extent possible. And our senior-level attorneys are spending dozens and dozens of hours out to all our law enforcement's training, again, going to folks, going to Loveland PD, going to the other PDs. One of the things that prompted this timing for coming here tonight is we just unveiled a data dashboard project about a month ago. It's called PPI per short, which is Prosecutor Performance Indicators. This is the largest data transparency project of any prosecutor's group in the country. We paired with seven other judicial districts in Colorado. There are 22 districts, so we were one of the eight that participated. We now, up on our website, and the Council and everyone else listening can go there on our DA website, if you just Google "Laramo DA," that pops up, and then in Stats and Tracking, that'll take you to our PPI data dashboard. We have about 60, what we call indicators, up on that dashboard. Indicators are essentially the tech nerd way to say graphs, right? So, we have a lot of graphs trying to show people what we're doing on a daily basis. We are really excited about this project because prosecutors' offices historically have not relied on data. Obviously, this Council knows how important data is in terms of running the city, but we have just never done that before. So, this isn't just new data we're publishing to the community. This is new data for us, even at the DA's office. And so, now, we're doing the big work of sorting through it, figuring out what we're doing well, so that we can maybe do more of that, improve on that, and figuring out what we need to do better to serve the community. And so, that's also, I'm going to be able to sort of explain what we're doing, how we're doing it, what extent we're doing things much better now to the Council now that we have some of these graphs. The important part is this is a starting point, these graphs. They don't necessarily answer a million questions. Frankly, they ask a million questions, but those questions they're asking are incredibly important for our service to make sure that we are protecting the community in the best way we can and treating everyone as equally as we can in the criminal justice system. So, transparency is the biggest win so far of this dashboard. We're hoping it builds accountability and trust with the community. As I tell folks, our hardest job at the DA's office is convincing 12 jurors, 12 random people from our community, to find someone guilty on a serious case beyond a reasonable doubt, right? It is hard to convince 12 people of anything, to agree on anything in this day and age. And so, to do that, we really have to be earning people's trust. We cannot assume it. And so, hopefully, with this dashboard and with some of this community engagement, we can help do that and therefore help keep our community safe in the long run. And then, as I said, data-driven decision-making in 2022, that's just an absolute essential for any office. So, this is our number of cases filed a year. Again, this is now on our public dashboard. You can see that there is a COVID dip, especially in our misdemeanor cases, and a little bit in our felony and petty offenses as well, but we essentially file about 12,000 to 13,000 cases a year at the District Attorney's Office. These, I now have some Loveland-specific information. These are not, unfortunately, available publicly. Long-term, we're working and making more of this sortable and available to the public. Right now, this is an internal metric we have, but that's one of the things I hope will be helpful and informative and educational to the Council to see some of those numbers that are not public yet. So, these are the Loveland cases. I would caution, the last data point on some of these is mid-quarter, so it's not a full quarter. So, they haven't dropped quite as much as that, but if you just look back at that second-to-last data point, you can see that certainly the misdemeanor filings in Loveland are down substantially in the last year or two. The rest are a little bit more on par. Violent crimes are obviously something that we get asked about a lot, and I know this Council's concerned about. This is violent crimes by quarter. Most of our data dates back to 2017. That's how far our dataset goes back, and this can see that this is county-wide, judicial district-wide, and violent crimes have been essentially steady since 2017, and certainly Laramo County has grown substantially. Loveland has too, obviously, and so we actually think that's a pretty good metric that we're keeping violent crimes at that level. This is the same data, but annually. You can see it was trending down a little bit in 2019, which is great. There was then a COVID bounce, and as this Council knows, COVID has impacted so many things in so many different ways, and our goal is to get that back trending downwards. This is the Loveland-specific violent crime data. Again, this is quarterly, and there's some numbers there, so it's balanced everywhere from five violent crime filings to 12 violent crime filings, or maybe up to 13 per quarter out of the city of Loveland. Again, it ebbs and flows, but it's been about steady since 2017. This is our declination rate. I put this up here because there's some conversation about, hey, is the DA's office filing the violent crimes brought to it, for instance? And this essentially shows yes. We're not declining any more crimes than we used to to try to get that number low or anything like that. We are filing the same percentage of cases that law enforcement have always brought us. This is something that folks can poke around on our public dashboard. It shows number of cases filed by charge type. This compares 2017 on the left to 2021, which is the last full year of data on the right. And I think frankly, the most interesting thing about this is that it really shows that across different categories of crime, it is essentially the same since 2017. The biggest difference frankly is in property crime, and that property crime filings have actually decreased quite a bit since 2017. Otherwise, it's fairly similar. One of the things that we found out, and actually, all other seven judicial districts essentially had similar findings, is that our timed felony resolution, which means how long is a case sitting in the courts before it's resolved, has grown substantially. That is not good for a lot of reasons. It's not fair to defendants who deserve speedy resolutions. It's not fair to victims who are going through the criminal justice process, and it's not good for reducing crime, because we want consequences for defendants as expeditiously as possible, because that's when they really mean something. When someone has a kid and you tell that kid you did something wrong, you got to serve timeout next week, that's probably not going to make a big difference. If you say you got to serve your timeout now, that might have more of an impact on them, right? It's the same thing with time-to-case resolution. So, we're trying to work on this now. This is one of the things we discovered. We're working with our defense attorney, public defender, judges, others in the criminal justice system to try to pinpoint where these sticking points are and what we can do to reduce that, which will, of course, also be a better use of taxpayer resources, too, if we're getting this timed felony resolution down. Again, some of this is certainly COVID-related, and you can see there's a line that demarcates COVID on this graph, but it started in 2017, and it's really been going up since then, so it's a lot more than COVID. One of the big things we looked at in this project is also whether we are treating folks equally across races and ethnicities, and whether there are disparities in the criminal justice system. I can tell you all that I chose to be part of this project. This is a voluntary project, in part because I know that disparities exist in the criminal justice system, but no one ever knew what those looked like. Where are they? How severe are they? What can we do to mitigate them? So, finally, we actually have some answers to some of those questions. This slide sort of indicates that, of course, disparities in anything go well beyond one office, right? In the criminal justice system, those go well beyond the DA's office. There are many inputs, many outputs that impact those. Part of our goal is to affect what we can affect internally within the DA's office, but then, of course, also collaborate with our community partners, people like councils, police departments, probation departments, mental health providers, et cetera, to try to get at some of these issues. This is one example where we did find some disparities, and this is incarceration rate. On the left, that shows Hispanic defendants versus white defendants, and on the right, that shows black defendants versus white defendants, and there is a disparity there. So, that is something that is high in our radar, and that's something we're working on. Our office has already spent hours and hours sifting through this and brainstorming what we can do to try to get at reducing some of these disparities. This is a long list. I'm not going to read all this, but folks, you know, whether they're watching online or the Council has this presentation, can look at some of these. These are just a handful of the ideas that we're going to start trying to tick off to get at reducing some of these disparities, because this is on the forefront of our minds. It's an incredibly important issue. It goes to the foundation of trust in the criminal justice system. However, there are things that we're doing great. So, this is the same theory here. This is showing differences among race and ethnicity, and this is showing in our case filings, and this shows that essentially, we're filing cases at the same rate, so there's no disparity there. This is, sorry, what I thought I was looking at, which is deferred judgments. So, this shows we are offering deferred judgments to black defendants, Hispanic defendants, white defendants at essentially identical rates. So, we're pretty proud of that, and that's one of these things that no one had any idea of that was true. Now, we can see that's true, that the system has been working in that regard. It's also one of the things that we're going to try to leverage to get at some of the other disparities. So, if there is a disparity in incarceration, but deferred judgments are working and there is no disparity, perhaps we need to start increasing our use of deferred judgments to defendants, and that can be an equity driver within our office and within the community. This graph shows difference in socioeconomic status. It uses defense attorney versus public defender. That's just a proxy for socioeconomic status. Those lower on the socioeconomic status totem pole are obviously the ones getting the public defender. Those with funds are hiring private attorneys. This shows we're offering essentially identical offers when it comes to incarceration to those with public defenders and private counsel. Again, that's something we're really proud of. That is showing that we have not been, there's been no disparity in terms of treating those types of defendants differently. This is something that folks can click around on a lot more in the website. It shows sentences by disposition type. One thing I would note, and I don't know if this is my next slide or not, oh, it is, is that, so this, you can see on the left there is felony sentences, and it looks like prison sentences are up. That's because this is by percentage. So, by percentage, it's looking like in 2022, prison sentences are up. On this next slide, which is unfortunately not a public, on the public dashboard yet, shows raw number. So, this shows that the raw number of prison sentences, which is, again, that dark purple on the very bottom row, are actually down and have been trending down for the last couple of years. So, our goal is to hold people accountable in ways that are meaningful and ways that are necessary, and so we absolutely are sending folks to prison when folks are putting this community continually at risk, but we are trying to not use incarceration to the greatest extent possible when other forms of rehabilitation, other resources are really going to benefit that person, benefit the victims, and benefit the community more in the long run. And so, this graph does show that we are making progress on that goal. This is the Loveland-specific sentencing data. It shows pretty similar trends to the last slide, which is the judicial district as a whole, and that we are reducing our reliance on jail and reducing our reliance on the Department of Corrections. Percentage of deferred judgments, I mentioned those before, and so that's why I have this slide. Deferred judgments, for those that don't know, are an opportunity for someone to plead guilty, to get access to resources that they need, whether that's drug treatment, alcohol treatment, domestic violence treatment, something like that, and utilize those services, complete it successfully, and then get their case dismissed. And when that case is dismissed, they often do not suffer the negative repercussions that a criminal conviction can haunt folks with, with things like jobs, student loans, housing, and other things like that. No one had any idea what the successful completion of deferred judgments was in Laramo County. No one knew. This actually shows what it is, and it's pretty high. It's about 70%, 75% of folks that we'd been giving deferred judgments to completed them successfully, which shows that, A, we're giving them to the right people, B, they were taking advantage of them, and that, of course, benefits the community. This is the Loveland-specific deferred judgment and sentence data. So, this shows that, you know, give or take, we're giving about 60 deferred judgments a year specifically to Loveland residents, and that their completion percentage is also very good. It has crept up pretty steadily since 2017, and since July 2020, and this goes to 2020 because to look back at the completion, you need that sort of two-year window to see whether they completed that sentence from two years ago. But back in 2022, they're completing it at about an 80% success rate, which is, again, great for the community. It's great from a resource preservation perspective, when we can get folks in and out of the system quickly, access to resources, accountability, and get them on with their lives in a law-abiding way. The recidivism rate in these cases is very low. It's about 13%. That's also not a number anyone ever had before, and that's a number that's pretty low in the overall recidivism spectrum. Here's the Loveland-specific recidivism rate. Again, this goes to 2021, and it shows it's even a little bit lower than that 13%. Of course, it ebbs and flows a little bit. This is aggregated quarterly here, but that, again, is a very low recidivism rate, so we think the community safety benefits for the deferred judgment program are very high. Another thing that certainly is on a lot of folks' minds and that we get asked about is motor vehicle theft. This is not a graph from our data dashboard. This is actually a graph compiled by the Common Sense Institute, which is a think-tank out of Denver, and I highlight this because certainly, any motor vehicle theft is bad. We take those seriously. I know how much a theft of a car for a family with multiple jobs and one car and kids going places can affect them. That is an incredible detriment to their life and maybe their livelihood, so we take those very seriously. That being said, our rates are nowhere in the same universe as some of our counties down in the metro area. So, if you can see some of the high ones, you know, Denver is 176 per 100,000 residents. Adams at the top there is incredibly high. We're at 16, so we're one of the lowest counties of any major county in Colorado, so we're actually doing fairly well in that regard. Our next steps on this are getting feedback from folks, whether that's the Council or everyone else here watching, about what they're seeing in this data, because, again, we're just going through it, too, but what folks are seeing in the data, what more they want to see, what changes they want to see at the DA's office, and how we can serve them best. So, I'm certainly happy to take that feedback. As I said, internally, we're working on a lot of things like reducing some of these disparities, but improving in the things that we've already been successful with, and we think we're going to make some big strides here over the coming years. Some of the other things that we've been working on that I'll go through quickly. We started our adult diversion program last year. That's mainly grant-funded and now includes, as of a couple months ago, a restorative justice component, too, and so that's another thing that we believe can be, A, an equity driver, B, a good use of taxpayer money in that regard, because we're getting folks out of the criminal justice system, but B, a way to hold folks accountable very quickly without the need for incarceration or other programs. So far, it's been incredibly successful. We held a warrant clearance event in Fort Collins a month or so ago, where we got 75 people with 125 cases come through, that we got to clear their warrants, hold them accountable in meaningful ways, and get them on with their lives. We're hoping to have one down here in Loveland, maybe come springtime, to give access to folks down here in Loveland. We hired a complex case prosecutor that is focusing on a couple different things, mainly fentanyl distribution and gun-related crimes. Those are things, the fentanyl epidemic has certainly hit Laramo County, not more so than any other area in Colorado or the country, but it is just an incredibly constant threat to our community, and so we're focusing on that very heavily. We're trying to boost our community engagement and outreach. Of course, that's part of the reason I'm here. For folks that don't know, again, we have a website where we're putting more and more stuff on, so you can find a lot of things, everything from victim services, and we have a great victim department that's doing great work with victims, so that's on our website. Also, of course, this data project's on our website. We're also on Facebook and Twitter at DA8Colorado, and so if folks want to see what we're up to every day, figure out what their DA's office is doing, what the criminal justice is up to, they can follow along. We updated our cert protocols to ensure that we are taking a look at more officer-involved incidents. Part of that came from the Karen Gardner incident, where the DA's office was never made aware of that, that there was serious bodily injury to a member of the community. Now, we are doing that. All the police departments, Loveland Police Department included, have been part of that process, are on board of that process, and there's been great collaboration amongst everyone in law enforcement to try to make sure that unbiased eyes are on more incidents, and that's been effective so far. We've done some legislative work down at the Capitol. Our office wrote and intimidating a witness bill that is getting protection for more victims and witnesses that are reporting crimes, because there was a gap in the law, and that's now in effect. And also, we are part of the Fentanyl Accountability and Prevention Bill. That bill is what got the passage, well, it got about $40 million in treatment funds, but it also got passage of a new law that says if you deal fentanyl and you cause someone's death, the penalty should be more severe. We have put a lot of effort into that. Our complex case prosecutor, as well as some of our other top folks, have been going out on every fentanyl-related death in Laramo County since July 1st, when that law went into effect. There's been about one every five or six days since July 1st, and we're investigating these essentially as homicides, because they are homicides, and they've taken a lot of work. The Northern Colorado Drug Task Force deserves a lot of credit, as well as all the local agencies who are dedicating persons, detectives on the homicide end, and our office is also going out, because this is certainly a threat and a deadly threat to our community. We started the competency court docket. Mental health is an ever-growing need in the criminal justice system, and we're trying to make sure that we can get folks access to those mental health services, hopefully out of custody to the greatest degree possible. And then, we also created an economic crime task force. Just to highlight one case, there was a fraud case involving a food truck that was stealing credit cards, and we got a plea in that case that resulted in $350,000 in restitution to folks. Thank you. This is my last slide, I guess. So, thank you for the Council for this time. I appreciate it. This is, again, how to get ahold of us. We have an office in Loveland, as I said, of course, in Laramo County. That's our website with the links, our email, our phone number, our Twitter and Facebook, so that the community knows how to get ahold of us. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions from the Council, any feedback from the Council in terms of what criminal justice issues may be on your minds, on your constituents' minds, what you'd like to see us focusing on, and what questions I may be able to answer for you about what we're up to.
All right. I saw Counselor Paul first.
Yeah. This is an impressive presentation.
Thank you, Counselor.
Very helpful. You say you had no idea of certain stats and all, but I take it that means before 2017?
No, and that's a great question. So, what we did is we did a look back. So, this project started September of last year. That's when it started in earnest. I was one of the eight guinea pigs of judicial districts, while the others watched us to see whether this would work out or not, but we paired with some national people, that's the PPI people, and they've done this at a couple of the big city offices around the country, and we paired with some local researchers at the DU Action Lab, and they have some really smart data people that are a lot smarter than me on numbers, and they did a look back on all of our data and pulled all this from 2017. So, no, the first time we laid eyes on it in a sort of final form was about two weeks before it went live in September.
How many district attorneys do you have?
I believe we have 42 prosecutors.
Wow. I'm familiar with it, having been in the legal system for a long time, but can you explain, I think it's kind of interesting, what your funding process is? Who pays for the district attorney in Colorado?
Yeah, so we are funded essentially entirely by the Laramo County Board of County Commissioners. So, we make a budget presentation to them every year. We are, of course, also funded by the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners, but Jackson County is something like half a percent or even less of our total population and caseload, so that's a very small percentage. We have one part-time attorney that works in Jackson County. All the other attorneys are working in Laramo County. Then, we do apply for a lot of grant funding. So, we have, oh, probably eight or 10 grants going right now. Some of them are funding things in our victim services department through state victim services money. Other things are funding, for instance, that complex case prosecutor was approved by the county commissioners, so that's through ARPA funding, ARPA grant funding, and then we have grant funding through Laramo County Behavioral Health Services Grant and some state ARPA money for our diversion program. So, we're trying to pursue grants to the greatest extent possible, but the short answer to your question is we're funded by the county.
All right. Counselor Olson.
Thank you. A couple of, well, first off, thanks for the presentation. I'm a data nerd, so I love the numbers and stuff.
The data nerds have really liked this project.
I appreciate people that go in there and dig in numbers and try to make some sense out of it all. Just for clarity, in your earlier slides, you talk about cases filed as a metric, and let's see, I don't see a slide number on this. Oh, seven, this is an example, but that's a good one there. So...
Who files it? What's the source of the filing? What does that mean?
That's a great question, and there's two answers. So, for misdemeanors, those are filed automatically by a law enforcement agency. So, if a Loveland police officer pulls someone over for a DUI, they write that person a ticket, they arrest that person, they file that with the courts, and it automatically becomes a case. Now, the DA's office can do with it what we will. We can prosecute it, make an offer, take it to trial. We can amend the charges, up or down. We can dismiss the whole case, but it's already been filed. Felonies work very differently. On a felony case, an officer would still make an arrest, they'd take someone to jail, but then they would schedule an appointment with our office and come in and ask to file that case, and at that filing stage, our office would be making a determination about what charges are or are not appropriate, and so there's a much more rigorous screening process at the outset of that filing case, felony case.
So, in felonies, it's somewhat impacted by the decision of the DA whether or not to pursue a case?
Correct. One of the changes I made early last year was to go to what we call vertical prosecution, and that essentially means the deputy DA handle in that case is the one filing it. We find that that makes for sort of stronger cases, better filing decisions, you know, dotting your i's and crossing your t's right at the beginning, because if you know, just in human nature, that you're going to have to try that case, you're probably going to be more careful at the outset. And so, before, there was a filing department that just filed, and now we're having those docket deputies file their own cases and take ownership, and that also builds good relationships with our local law enforcement partners and sort of strengthens back and forth, because they might say, hey, did you think about, you know, writing a subpoena for these records? And so, it's a good relationship building as well in that case.
So has that been considered in the data, that change in practice?
Well, I'm not sure I followed the question.
Well, what I mean is if the practice was before that you had an office that just basically, an officer brings a case before him and they just turn around and file it, that would be very different than where you have some discretion and some percent, and that'd be a statistic. Do that, okay, you bring me 100, but I'm only going to pursue 60.
Sure. And I don't want to give the impression they were just rubber stamping everything. Certainly, there was still a process. And that was, that was this slide here. So this is what we call the declination rate. So that top, these colors are always a mystery to me, but that top light blue color, those are the cases we've declined. That bottom purplish color, those are the cases we filed for felonies. And so what that shows is the percentage of cases we've declined has stayed the same. The goal in that process transition wasn't to decline more, it was to make sure that they are better from the outset and that they're filed appropriately from the outset. So doesn't necessarily mean we're going to be filing less crimes. It just means we're going to be, we're going to be sort of doing that due diligence right at the beginning, not when a case sets for trial six months later.
And that's a great slide for me to ask my next question. So our legislature's decriminalized a lot of, particularly drug cases, but other felonies. And so would part of that decline that you're seeing be because they changed what they considered or what the law says is a felony?
Yeah, it's a great question. So the thing that would be reflected in this graph, and this goes to the end of 2021 because this is aggregated yearly, so this doesn't show the 2022 data. In 2020, they defelonized most simple drug possession. So they didn't decriminalize it, it's still a misdemeanor, but they did defelonize it. So some of those would drop off, and some of that probably does reflect some of this decline, yes. This year, in March of 2022, a law went into effect that was called the Misdemeanor Reform Bill, and that also moved some low-level felonies to misdemeanors. That wouldn't be reflected in here yet because this only goes through 2022, but some of those simple drug possessions certainly have changed where those cases appear, and now some of them appear in county court.
Okay. The other question I have is, how does this tie to actual crime? I mean, it's somewhat of a proxy. To me, it's people are getting caught, not the ones that are getting away. So, I mean, most people I talk to say the crime's going up. I just looked at the statistics. Colorado's the number-one state for auto thefts. And although we're low on the totem pole, when you've got a big number, that ends up being a big number as well. So what do you see in that regard as far as us addressing auto thefts and, you know, trying to reduce that here in Laramie County?
Yeah, I appreciate the question, Councilman. I'd say a couple things. One is that this is the data from our office, right? So this is only what comes to us. And so to your point about it's those getting caught, you're correct. Those that are not caught, of course, don't come to the DA's office. And so this is not a hard number of how many crimes were committed necessarily. It's a little bit different. Most, our local law enforcement agencies, Loveland Police included, also keep some statistics. They file statistics. You all get those annual reports from your police department. And, you know, they've been required to keep statistics for a long time. Frankly, some, you know, in law enforcement are like, it's about darn time that the DA's office has to keep some stats, too, and publish them, right? And I agree. You know, it's about time for us to be transparent with what's going on in their office, and so that's what this project achieves. So yes, there are certain categories of crime that have gone up. A lot of that is COVID-related. COVID just through things haywire in a lot of ways. And as you could see from some of the graphs, some of those have started to creep back down a little bit since COVID. Auto thefts, I mean, again, I would never come here and say that they're not an issue. The auto thefts are serious. However, it's not just that we're a little bit below some counties, right? I mean, we're by a factor of 10 below some counties. So it's a significantly different situation here in Laramie County than in some of the other metro counties. But that is something we're keeping an eye on very closely.
Okay. Well, thanks for being here.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Thanks for your presentation. Thanks for being here, taking your time.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor Foley?
Well, thanks for all the data. With fentanyl being decriminalized, and we all have our opinions of that, is your office tracking any of this fentanyl-specific data? Meaning, okay, are you separately tracking the charges that are filed on fentanyl-related cases? Are you tracking hospitalizations for fentanyl? Are you tracking ER visits for fentanyl? And are you tracking deaths for fentanyl? And if so, can those be made available? Because I believe one of the biggest tools that you have in your quiver is to exemplify to the public what a problem fentanyl is, fentanyl and heavy drugs. And while these are not going to be friendly or fluffy numbers, I'd like to see those numbers tracked and on your website. Again, charges filed, hospitalizations, ER visits, and deaths. And you're the only one that has the ability to do that because of HIPAA. You'd have, you know, you're going to have to write HIPAA overrides so that you can actually collect that data. And while you don't need to be interested in the specific names of the patients, you need to, I think we need to track the bulk numbers. Because if we don't know where we are, we don't know whether we're succeeding going forward.
Thank you for the question, Councilman. First, I, again, wholeheartedly agree with you. Fentanyl is an epidemic, and it's a very serious problem, and it is growing. Part of this PPI project was not separating out fentanyl, so we don't have a specific graph for that. Anecdotally, I can tell you, yes, fentanyl, essentially in every area and everywhere in Colorado and the country, has increased over the last couple of years. And we can certainly try to look at some of those specific filings for fentanyl and try to provide some of that data, so I can try to follow up with the council on that. In terms of things like hospitalizations and deaths, that's not something our office would be capable of tracking. That would be something that, I don't know, we'd have to get from UC Health and deaths from, probably from the coroner's office or from the Department of Health. However, we are tracking things like, for instance, the overdose deaths that we're made aware of. And so, again, partnering with the Northern Colorado Drug Task Force and some of the, in the coroner's office and some of our other partners, we are tracking those. I don't have that stat handy, but I know the Drug Task Force does. And again, since July 1st, which is when that started tracking, it was closing in on 20 deaths due to fentanyl in Laramie County since July 1st.
20 per year, per month?
20 since July 1st, and so we're on October 18th.
Okay. Well, those are absolutely unfortunate. I think the hospitalizations and ER visits are more important.
No, it's a good question. I'd be interested in that number myself, but that's not something we have, we don't get alerted when someone goes to the ER.
Do you have the ability to write law that would force the hospitals to alert you?
I don't. I suppose some of our local legislators may, but it's an interesting idea. And that might be data they're willing to share with the council or with folks. I don't know the answer to that.
Well, obviously, it would be more work for them, so they're not going to do it out of the goodness of their heart.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor Vellal.
Sorry. Thanks for coming today and the presentation. Really appreciate you staying for some questions. It's nice to have. Thank you. If you can go back to slide, I have it at a 7 of 30. It's the same one that Steve was talking about. I have a same slide, different question. Nope. Keep going. There you go. If you look at this graph, it's like we have, on average, I'm eyeballing it, but 550, these would be cases filed through 2021, and then it just falls off for misdemeanor. Do you have to 200? I mean, that's significant. So do you have any early indications of why that is? I mean, I'm racking my brain here. You've got better crooks that get away, or cops that don't chase them down, or less staff, whatever the case might be. Have you been able to?
You know, we're still digging through a lot of this. This was also a surprise to us, and this is not data or a chart that we had broken up by law enforcement agency prior to a month ago. So we're just sort of looking at this. Certainly, I can't answer for the Loveland Police Department. That's a question that is better suited to them. I do know that they've certainly been understaffed. Obviously, the council's aware. Y'all are looking for a new chief right now, and so I have every, you know, hope and expectation that, you know, a new chief's going to come in and build that back up and get them back to fully staffed, and I would expect that number to go back up at that point. But of course, when the resources are strained, you know, there have to be sacrifices made. And I think that's probably why you don't see the same declination felonies, which is that yellow line, because, you know, they're putting persons detectives still to those serious cases, but they, there have been pullback in other areas, perhaps.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Sampson?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. It's cool you're going to do this every year.
If you'll be, if you'll have me back. I don't want to be presumptuous.
Well, I would support it. I think everyone learned something tonight, so I think it's great. And the transparency with the process, I appreciate as well, because this is something that unless you're going through it, until, if you're someone who goes through it, you have no idea what, you know, the process really is. Or some people feel that way. I wanted to ask you about this decriminalization of simple drug possessions. You know, Counselor Fogel had may mention that fentanyl is decriminalized. I think there's a lot of things that are maybe misinformation or untruce or miscommunications, whatever. So what is the situation with fentanyl? What kind of charges can, you know, how does that work?
Yeah. Thank you for the question, Councilwoman. So it is not, it never was decriminalized. It was defelonized, meaning it was moved, not just fentanyl, but essentially pretty much every simple possession in 2020 was moved from a low-level felony to a misdemeanor crime. This year, in the legislature, they specifically passed a bill, that bill I mentioned, that addresses fentanyl and separates fentanyl out from other drugs, with the understanding that fentanyl is so potent and so lethal, it is simply in a class by itself. The sort of rhyme that you hear is one pill can kill, which I don't love because it sort of maybe trivializes what happens, but it's true. One pill really can kill folks. These pills are being pressed, you know, by drug dealers. And so one pill may have a little bit in it, and someone barely gets high, and the next pill may have enough to kill someone in it. And it is incredibly dangerous. Since that July 1st law went into effect, we've seen juveniles die from fentanyl overdoses in Laramie County, and we've seen, again, closing in on 20 people. Part of that bill, it did a couple things. Again, it was money for treatment and resources. It also changed the level. So now, instead of four grams to be a felony, which is true for other drugs, it's now one gram of fentanyl to be a felony. And one gram of fentanyl, I was going to name you a number of pills, but I don't want to get it wrong, so I won't do that. But that's not much. So filing felonies on fentanyl possession is now something we can and do do in certain circumstances. So simple possession of fentanyl can now be a felony again. That's not true for other drugs. The other thing that bill did was create specific penalties for distribution of fentanyl specifically causing death. And that's the big focus that we have been honed in on since July 1st, are those distribution-causing deaths? Because, of course, those are the worst actors in the community, not the folks using, the folks preying on other members of our community and dealing that poison.
Right. Okay. Thank you for clearing that up because it's a topic of conversation everywhere, right? And you had said simple possession is four grams for other substances?
Yeah. For other drugs, less than four grams is generally a misdemeanor, and more than four grams is generally a felony.
And that's only possession? That is not intent to distribute herself?
Correct. So if we have other evidence of intent to distribute, things like ledgers and scales and/or, you know, digital evidence like text messages and that sort of thing, we will absolutely charge intent to distribute and prosecute someone for intent to distribute as a felony.
Good. Okay. Well, thank you for being hard on this. I appreciate it.
All right. Counselor Foley?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and I just have to give a shout out to your office and the Northern Colorado Drug Task Force and the work that you've done recently with, I always say, if you hit the supply, you start to really gain on what you're trying to do. And I just thank you.
Yeah. Well, thank you. And before I was the DA, I was actually a member of the Northern Colorado Drug Task Force as a prosecutor assigned out there. And they do a great job. They're hitting the supply, as you said, focusing on the worst actors, folks bringing up, you know, whether it's pounds of methamphetamine or thousands of pills of fentanyl, you know, from Denver area and beyond, and doing good work. And the Loveland Police Department is a member of that, of course, and I appreciate their commitment to it.
Gordon, could you go to the slide that's felony and incarceration differences by defendant, race, ethnicity, Hispanic or Latin, A? So, you know, looking at these, it looks like kind of even, 62, 60%. But what's hidden in there is that for our Hispanic population, they make up about 12% of our population, and on the slide to the right, about 1 and 1/2% for black population. You know, you said you're aware that this is a problem and you're working on it. How deep dive does your tracking go? Are you doing it by city, by age? How are we trying to find it? Because obviously, the percentages of people being arrested, people of color being arrested, is way high when you consider they're a very small part of our population. So what are you doing?
Yeah. Well, the sample size is a good question, and that, again, is especially for black defendants in Laramie County. I think in Laramie County, it's something like 2 or 2 and 1/2% of our population, so it is obviously a very small percentage. And so we do sort of suffer from some sample size skewing, which is one of the reasons why some of these are just internal things, right? Like by police department, right? Well, Loveland is a decent-sized department, but we also have teeny departments, right? And so some of that data wouldn't really look right because a couple people happen to go to prison, the numbers would be totally askew. So if I could go to this next slide, these are some of the things we're doing. Now, the first part of your question is sort of, you know, are we looking at that data by other metrics? And the answer is yes. We, even on our public data dashboard, you can see some of those sample sizes. And so we have some sort of pie charts on our public dashboard that just aren't in this presentation. And it shows you the percentages in our community and the percentages that are charged. And so there is some more race and ethnicity data on there for folks interested. Internally, we are able to sort of sort for some more things like violent crimes or domestic violence or other things, and really try to narrow in on, you know, which cases are going to prison, and were those cases appropriate for prison? So we are trying to do some of that look. That's going to take a longer period of time, but that's sort of among this list of things that we're trying to do. If we did each of these, you know, one at a time and see how it played out, right, we'd, you know, we'd be here for 50 years trying to figure out which of these is the right tactic. So we're trying to address all of these as quickly, but also as, you know, thoroughly and rigorously as we can while still obviously keeping an eye on community safety and making sure we're handling significant cases appropriately.
All right. And I assume, you know, as well as incarceration, you, you know, charge people fines. They have to pay a fine, I assume. Are we also tracking that, that equality in fines? Because, you know, when you think about, you know, a $1,000 fine for somebody, you know, that makes $25,000 a year versus a $1,000 fine for somebody that makes $125,000 a year, it's not equal.
Sure, that's true. So, you know, fines are, a fine only is not really a felony sentence. You can see that that top sort of teal color in the misdemeanor graph, that is folks who are sentenced to fines, community services, and fees, and that was it. So those are usually very low-level cases that someone's going to get just a fine or community service or something like that. But those do exist. The fines and fees are almost always assessed by the court, not the DA's office. So we're not usually making people offers that say, you got to pay this, or you got to pay that, because I agree with you, that is unequal. And some folks are going to be able to pay you $1,000, no problem. For other folks, that's a near impossibility. So we are cognizant of that, but there are certain fines and fees that the court just has to impose, and statutorily, they can't waive. But we've tried to make our other programs, like our diversion program, for instance, that's currently operating with no cost to defendants. Same thing with restorative justice. Other counties have some costs associated with those, but we want to make them available to everyone at this point, so we're still trying to facilitate that.
Well, I appreciate what you're doing. I appreciate you being here, and you're doing a great job. So I'm not seeing any other lights on. Does anybody know if Counselor McCall... a great job. So, I'm not seeing any other lights on. Does anybody know if Counselor McFaul tried to appear? I don't either.
I'm here, Mayor.
Did you have any questions? You're not showing on my screen, so I don't know if you had any questions.
Oh, my, no, my camera, my camera's up. I'm here, and, no, I'm fine.
Okay. All right.
I appreciate the DA being here. I appreciate the presentation, though.
All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate it, and I look forward to seeing you again.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, Council. And again, for those watching and listening, if, if folks have questions and feedback about this, I encourage them to contact our office.
All right. Thank you.